So, thank you for being here. I hope that you find this meeting to be informative and a good time to see each other on Zoom. I am one of the members of the homecoming team of this task force. And the other members are Rick Bowman, Dave Burrell, LeAnn Moore, Brad Piggott, Emily Rep, Mark Hickson, and Kim Carroll. So, we have been me- Oh, wait, Chanson. Sorry, I muted you, Chanson, when I muted everybody. Okay, but did y'all hear me list the names?
Yes.
We were meeting every single week for a while. Now, we're about every other week as that date keeps getting pushed further and further away. And as we've already come up with a lot of our plans. Today, for this meeting, we're going to watch the video that probably most of you have already seen. But in case some of you have not seen it, we don't want to have to rehash all the protocols that we already have been talking about. So, we're going to first watch the video that has David speaking and then the safety protocols listed. If you have already seen it, feel free to go to the bathroom during that time or just refresh yourself and be prepared with, for the rest of the meeting. We're going to watch the video. Then Dave is going, Dave Burrell is going to talk about that metric that we chose for when we can regather. Then LeAnn is going to talk about keeping each other informed about illness as we return and what we're going to do about that. Brad is going to talk about live streaming the services. David will share any final thoughts he wants to, and then we'll have time for question and answer. Many of you have already submitted some questions as we go. If you have another question, please put it in the chat box. And Emily Rep is going to be monitoring the chat box for those questions and bring those up at the, during the question and answer time at the end. This meeting is being recorded, so it will be posted to Facebook and YouTube later for those who could not be present in this moment for this meeting. That is all I'm going to share, other than I'm going to share my screen for this video. So, let's do that.
Hello, I'm Pastor David McGintzky of Man Shack United Methodist Church, and I'm joined by Pastor Chanson Asparza. We want to talk with you a little bit about issues surrounding our return to the building, which we hope will someday happen in the future. We will have more information on this in a question and answer format at a town hall that we will be having on Sunday, July 12th at 2:00 PM. So, I hope that you'll let us know your questions for the town hall, and we will try to address them at that time. But I'd like just to remind you of two very important metrics that we use as we think about returning to our church building. The first metric is what I would call the metric of the good and great commandment. And that is where Jesus reminded us to love the Lord our God with all our heart and soul and might, but also to love our neighbor as ourselves. And we certainly do practice and experience the love of God in worship. And that is why we hope someday to be back in our worship building as soon as it is safe to do so. But we also realize that it is very important to love God by loving our neighbor. And this is why we have tried to be so careful about returning to the church building. For in the return to the church building, we want to make sure we have safeguarded the community. We've protected the vulnerable people in our own congregation, as well as outside the congregation by our actions. And so, we have tried, as you will see, to be very, very careful and responsible about decisions made around the returning to the building. I also want to let you know that there is actually a statistical metric that we will use that is also important. We are following, as a church, the 14-day hospitalization rate of Travis County, and we are looking for a downward trend that goes 14 days before we return to the building. So, we were hopeful a couple of weeks ago that the trend might go down. Sadly, it has gone up, and that, of course, delays our return to the building. But we do expect one day to return, and so I'd like to ask Chanson to share with you some specifics about our return to the building.
These are some of the steps that we will take to promote safety. Our worship services will continue in the same schedule as we have been while under quarantine. Traditional worship service at 8:30 AM in the sanctuary, and Life on the Road Contemporary Worship at 11:00 AM in the Family Life Center. There will only be one service at each of those hours. Both services will be livestreamed. We encourage the following to stay at home and worship via livestream. Those who are sick or have COVID symptoms. Anyone who has been exposed to someone who has been diagnosed as COVID positive. And anyone who considers themselves vulnerable or immunocompromised, or who cares for someone who is vulnerable. We will be following CDC guidelines to clean our facilities. Masks and social distancing will be required. Hand sanitizer will be available. Greeters will be at entrances to minimize amount of contact and ensure social distancing. Hospitality time, the cookies and coffee will not be available. Nursery or childcare will not be provided, and children must remain with their families at all times. Certain parts of the facilities will be off limits. At 8:30, only the sanctuary and the bathrooms located between the sanctuary and the choir rooms will be open. At 11:00, only the Family Life Center's main room and bathrooms will be open. And worship is going to look different than before. Both the sanctuary and the Family Life Center will be set up to maintain social distancing guidelines. Members of the same household may sit together. Please refrain from physical contact with non-family members. There will be no passing of the peace. Worshippers will be asked to remain seated for the duration of the service. You'll be able to pick up communion packets as you enter. Bulletins will be left on seats and made available digitally. Pinnials will not be available. Parents will be asked to bring their own worship bags for children, and children will stay with their families during worship. Offering baskets will be on tables near the exits so you can place your offering as you leave. Greeters will lead worshippers out a section at a time. We will ask people to leave the building quickly and visit outside. Sunday school classes will not be offered initially, but may continue to meet online via Zoom. These are the majority of the things. There might be other precautions that we'll be taking, and we will inform you as it gets closer to that time.
Thank you, Chanson, and thanks to your committee that's worked so hard on these precautions for our return. I know it sounds like Lot, and church will, as we mentioned, be different than it was before, but it will still be church. And we will be serving the world by keeping the worship of God alive and interceding for people in our world who have needs. But until then, we will be serving by continuing to make the sacrifice of worshiping from home. Jesus once said, "I am among you as one who serves." And so, in our response to this pandemic as a worshiping community, we do want to serve God, not just through our worship, but serve by the way we worship and the precautions that we take before we get to worship and the precautions we take in worship. And I believe not only will the community protect, be protected, but I believe the gospel will go forward and the kingdom of God will advance. A number of years ago, I had the privilege of taking a trip to look at some of the churches in Asia Minor, the so-called Churches of Revelation. And one of the lessons I learned there is that when the gospel first got to Asia Minor, the whole area, the population was considered 90% pagan. In other words, 90% non-Christian, non-Jewish. Within 125 years, the whole area was 95% Christian. How did this amazing transformation happen? Well, I know it was the work of God and the Holy Spirit, but I also know this. One way it didn't happen was through buildings, because the church owned no buildings. They had no great possessions. They simply had the power of the Holy Spirit and the love that they had for one another and for that community. We possess that love for the community. We possess that Holy Spirit. We possess that love for one another. I am confident that we will continue to go forward. May God bless you in the days ahead.
Okay. Thank you for watching that again. And I just realized that I did not pray for this meeting, and it's always good to pray. So, I'm just going to offer a quick prayer. Dear Lord, I thank you for your great love. I pray that during this time that we can have good communication and kindness and good decision-making and whatever we need to talk about, think about. I pray that it happens at this time. In your name I pray, amen. Now, I invite Dave Burrell to talk a little bit about the metric. And as he does that, I'm going to bring, well, when he tells me to, I'll bring up the image.
Sure, bring it up. Okay, yeah, let me just say a few words about the metric that the committee is using and what it means. We, what we went with is, what you're looking at is the seven-day rolling average hospitalizations for Travis County. It's not because we don't love Hayes County or any other place. That's a, all of the people are very important here. But it seems that Travis County seems to be the most severe circumstance for COVID, so we're following that. The reason, so it's, this is the number of people in the hospital, but it's basically an average of the, of the last set of days of, of the number of people in the hospital. And the reason we average it, the reason it's averaged is simply to try and smooth the curve so we can see the trend better. The actual, we could, we could look at actual hospitalizations, and we're keeping track of that as well. But that tends to jump up and down quite a bit, so it makes it harder to see the trend. So, that's the advantage of this. The disadvantage is because we're doing a seven-day average, this is, we're really sort of looking back about, you know, about three and a half days in terms of what's going on. So, all this shows that there was a spike about, that started on about the 13th of June, which is, of course, the spike everyone knows about, which was about 16 days or so after the reopening on Memorial Day weekend. The, turns out that, it shows that, but the, if you, if you look at the, at the, at the very end here, just in the last few days, it shows us leveling out. Actually, there's a very slight increase yesterday. It turns out that the actual hospitalizations are dropping now. We're actually near 400 in the hospital in Travis County now. So, so this metric, we're actually going to be dropping. It's almost virtually guaranteed that we'll see our first decrease in this metric in over a month today. So, now the question is, of course, is that going to continue or not? And, you know, nobody knows. If it does continue, what we're, what we've chosen as a metric is a metric that, that, you know, that other professionals in, in the community have used, which is to look at a 14-day decrease, actually in the community and nationwide. I think it's a CDC precaution to wait 14 days of drops in these various metrics. The reason we chose hospitalizations versus some of the other, there's maybe a half and a dozen metrics out there. You know, the total number of cases, the, the total number of active cases, deaths. All of these, for all of these, we, we felt that hospitalizations was perhaps the clearly, clearest and easiest to understand, and also was least prone to, to other factors that maybe are not important. For example, the number of people being tested. So, the number of people being tested, you know, has, people have alleged that that maybe has an effect on the positivity ratio. But if you're sick enough to go to the hospital, it doesn't matter how many people in the community were tested. You're going to wind up in the hospital. So, that's, that's the reason we chose this one. So, having said that, the, really, the only other thing that I wanted to mention is we're looking at this 14-day drop before we consider opening the church for services. That's not, that's not a, an, an end-all number that, that's going to just click on and off like a switch. The committee is going to be looking at what's going on. We're going to make an educated guess or in some kind of informed decision on when it makes sense to open the church. And if, if things don't look right, or if, you know, depending on what the circumstances are after that 14-day drop, we may or may not decide that it's, that it's reasonable to reopen the church. Where that, my point is, is that we're not slave to this metric. The metric is slave to us. So, want to make that point? And then the only other thing, you know, my prediction, I think that perhaps, you know, hopefully, we'll be, this will be dropping, and we'll be seeing a decrease for the next, for the next period of time that will last more than 14 days. One thing you have to, that you have to consider, though, is the, it took about 16 days, 16 or 17 days for the, from the time we reopened Texas to the point where we started the surge. And the, the one thing that, that I guess is a concern for me anyway, is, you know, we just got through the Fourth of July weekend. Depending on how people behaved during the Fourth of July, 16, 17 days, that is around the 20th of July, we might expect to see another surge. My, my own prediction is that it will either be a very small nonexistent or a bump. I don't think we're going to see a humongous increase, but who knows? We'll be, we'll all be watching on the 20th of July. Then finally, the, people are asking about what is, when does the church reopen? With this 14-day metric in place, what that says is clearly the night, if, if assuming it starts dropping and continues to drop for the next two weeks, the 19th and 26th will be out because that's within our two-week period. So, the, we would, I can say relatively safely, and the committee, I believe, would agree that the, that we would not be looking to reopen the church before August 2nd. Now, will it be August 2nd? That's, you know, we'll have to decide that as, as time goes on because we, we don't want to make that decision just, just blindly based on this metric. So, we'll be looking at that. I'm assuming that the church will have at least a, I assume, a week notice before, before the reopening. That's, that's, that's it for me. So, I think I'm ready to pass back either to Chanson or to LeAnn.
Yeah, we'll, we'll go on to LeAnn.
Hello, everyone. I am going to talk a little bit about just protocol in the sense of what's going to happen if and when we open back up. So, if you'll give me a second to open mine. Oops, I think I skipped, hold on. I think I skipped on that. Can everyone see that?
No.
Can anyone see that?
No.
No. Let me try again. How about now?
Yes.
All right. All right, how about that? Does everybody have it now? Thumbs up, we're good? Okay. Basically, worshippers who have symptoms, fever, cough, shortness of breath, are considered at risk or compromised, should not attend worship. We're asking for you to be responsible. Worship with us online. We love having you with us, but bottom line is, we want everyone to be safe. And that's something that I think I'm very blessed about this committee, that we are very cautious about reopening too soon. I think that we are still able to worship via the internet, which is a blessing. And I know everyone does want together, get together, but at the same point, we best protect everyone involved. If you've been exposed to someone who has been tested positive with COVID, we obviously ask you to self-quarantine at home and to worship online with us. And after we return, if you attend a worship service and then test positive, we would need you to contact the church immediately. And it's very, very important for those who are attending worship in person to document their attendance because, for instance, in my son's workout camp, they did have a positive test, and that group was notified immediately that was directly involved. So, that is something that we need to be able to make sure we have documentation of anyone who attends a worship service. And so, we need to make sure we have your name, any contact information that you want us to be able to reach out to you. But again, so you're going to be responsible that if you are tested positive for COVID after attending a worship service, you will need to contact the church immediately so that we can take the protocol to contact all those that were in attendance. Again, the church will need to notify worshippers. We do have some confidentiality that we'll have to comply with, with the Americans with Disabilities Act. We are creating, so to speak, a standard response. We would notify you so you've been exposed. We would not be able to share who was the person or anything like that. All we could say was at the 8:30 service or the 11 o'clock service. And we would ask you to follow the same guidelines as being exposed to someone. Self-quarantine, possibly consider testing for COVID if you are having symptoms. After exposure, worshipper, worshippers should not return to church until they meet all the criteria to end home isolation. Together, we can overcome COVID-19. We will face this crisis by responsible individual behaviors. We will fight this pandemic by following the best practices. And although we are confident in our ability to confront this health crisis, is it important as community, it's extremely important that our friends and neighbors, sorry, I can't see everything because of my screen. My people are all in there. Sorry, y'all, my hips just keep reading that. Because I can't see it. There we go. Impacts our community. It's extremely important that our friends and neighbors stay the course and adhere to the advice of the public health experts when practicing social distancing and remain disciplined in our sanitation and protective procedures. I will be the person that's in charge of, so to speak, disinfecting at the school. I mean, I'm sorry, at the church with our, our custodians. We are following the CDC guidelines for church sanitations. So, I, I feel very confident in cleaning. But again, the bottom line is, we want everyone to stay safe. And if you have any compromised issues, we would want you to stay home. And again, if you are then exposed, contest, contact us immediately. And that's all for me.
Thank you, LeAnn. Now, we go to Brad about live streaming.
Okay, can everybody hear me? It looks like I'm talking. All right. Trying to share my screen here. Says I'm sharing, can everybody see it? Okay. So, today, I'm going to talk about live streaming services a little bit. You know me, I like to tell jokes and things. My favorite quote so far about this live streaming experience for me was, "The sound today is two cans and a string," which was the first Sunday I had been doing this, and we were scrambling to figure out what was wrong. So, I, I share this just because I thought it was pretty funny and also to, to let you know that we do appreciate your feedback. Sometimes, we're able to fix things right away. Sometimes, things lag a week while we try and figure out, you know, what went wrong. But it's, it's a bit of a new world for us, too, and we're, we're doing our best as we kind of move forwards here. So, the impact that we're having today, you know, at least, you know, this is my opinion, I guess. This has kind of, in my mind, become a little bit of our, our primary outreach. You know, pretty much everything we do is a video or something on the internet, whereas before, you know, we didn't have a huge internet presence. We're averaging about 450 views per Sunday. That's a rough number. And a view is three seconds on Facebook. So, every time you roll by it on your Facebook news feed for three or five seconds, that counts as a view. I can speak to the life or to the 8:30 service. We probably see anywhere from 70 to 90 people or so. The kind of how it's come about, you know, is before COVID hit, what we did, at least in the traditional service, was we would record the audio from the service, and then it would be recorded on a little kind of tape player device sort of thing. And then Mark would upload it to the church's webpage somewhere. It didn't really exist on Facebook that I'm aware of or YouTube, and there was no video presence. So, then, once the pandemic kind of hit, we, we scrambled a little bit to try and make something happen. We had the iPhone and the iPad for a little bit. And then, as the committee kind of got rolling, we found a rental camera. Gary Carpenter found a rental camera that we used for a couple of weeks. And then, as we did some research and figured out what we really felt like we needed, we actually bought a camera about a month ago or so. And then, the kind of the grand thing that we've done since then is we've integrated that camera into the sound system in each worship space. So, I'm sure you guys noticed the sound kind of took a, a step change up. At least, I hope it's been up, probably like four or five weeks ago at this point. So, the goals that we were trying to get to is, we're, we're trying to improve the live streaming experience since it is one of our, our main ways of outreach these days. We're trying to improve the video capture. I think it's probably about as good as it's going to get without a significant investment past this. And we also wanted to improve the audio capture. We want to make live streaming something that can happen while members are in the worship space. So, you'll notice, for instance, in the traditional service, and I think in Life on the Road, we're filming from way in the back of the, of the worship space. So, way up in the balcony in the sanctuary. And that's really because, you know, we could put the camera a lot closer, but we're trying to get it to where, when people are sitting in the pews, they're not having to look around the camera or see me running a computer and the soundboard and all this other thing. So, the, the end goal was to have the solution in place by June 7th, 2020. And that seems kind of like a random date. That was really the first date that we thought it was at all feasible that we would be back in the, the worship spaces in person. So, you can see just with that number that we are, you know, we are trying to pay attention to what's going on in the world around us and not just open the church because we can. So, some of the constraints we had, you know, anybody that's been on a church committee knows that we've got some budget restrictions. The world is not our oyster when it comes to spending money. So, we're trying to minimize the capital and the operating costs. And then, the other thing is that, you know, we don't, we didn't want to load up our staff with, with yet another thing. So, we wanted it to remain a simple operation, kind of like what the sound system is right now for the two services, something that could be run by a volunteer. So, what we ended up doing is, after kind of going through how we could make this work, we bought a, a camera. It was about $2,100. We bought a minor converter for the sanctuary soundboard, and then we have a low on, ongoing cost for the actual software we use to get the audio and the video to come together and show up on Facebook. And that's about $12 per month. So, it's a really low ongoing cost and a, and a moderate one-time investment so far. So, this is what we actually bought. If you can see it on the right-hand side here, this thing is like, I don't know, it might be eight inches tall, maybe six inches wide. It's, it's pretty small. It has a 20x zoom, so you can, and I, I hope you've noticed from the sanctuary service and the Life on the Road that we can actually get a pretty clear picture from clear in the back of the, of the worship space. And that was really one of the goals. The other thing that this allows us to do long-term is, this is a, what they call a pan tilt zoom camera. So, it can all be operated, turned, zoomed in, moved around remotely instead of having a person right next to the camera. It talks to the computer by USB, and then you can move it using a serial control. So, there's, we actually have a joystick and a little control pad for it. So, how it works, you know, for those of you that are interested, you know, microphones that we always are using in every service are coming into the sound system mixboard. The video camera is coming in as well. They're going by USB into a laptop. Then we have slides that we're preparing upfront. So, I know for the traditional service now, Leslie, my wife, is, is getting most of the, most of the slides together during the week. And then, they all come together in the encoding software. And then, we have a, just a big push during the service to pay attention and try and put things up as they come up in the service. So, like you noticed today, I think I was probably late on a, on a verse or something in the hymn, and I think I had David muted right at the beginning. Sorry, David. But it is something we're, we're getting better at as, as time goes on. So, this, this picture is just a few of us that were here in the church. Boy, this was way back in, in early June, I guess, trying to get this together. You can't really see the camera in this. It's up here on the, on the left-hand side. But in addition to that, and Spencer, and myself, and Mark, the person behind the camera is Chanson. Chanson did a lot of the early work on this and really appreciated her efforts. She's the person that figured out how to use the live streaming software and got it all set up and showed me how to make it work. So, it's really been a, a big team effort. Kendall Carroll runs the camera for traditional, and I think Life on the Road, too, perhaps. Mark, of course, brings the service together during the week. Leslie does the slides. So, there's, there's a fair number of us trying to make this work every week. So, what it looks like, at least from my point of view, in the future, near term, you know, particularly once we're back in the worship space where we have other things that are going on and we're trying to pay attention to, we probably need a few more volunteers. The person who's running at least part of this is going to go back to college in the fall. We are going to continue to livestream just the 8:30 traditional and then the 11 o'clock Life on the Road. So, if we got back to a point where we had three services in a day, we would not be live, live streaming the 11 o'clock traditional right now. And that's really just, I mean, we just don't have the hardware right now to have a camera in two spaces at once. So, it would require us to do a little bit more. So it would require us to do a little bit more investment. We're also going to do some minor investments in protecting the camera since it is fairly expensive and without it, we're kind of toast. In the medium term, you know, right now, we're using the church's Wi-Fi connection. So everything you see comes over the wireless system and goes out the church that way. If you've been around our church's Wi-Fi, sometimes it's a little little questionable. And at least in the chemical industry, anytime we can connect something with a piece of copper and make it work that way, it's better than if we're just relying on some energy wave going through the atmosphere. And then, we'll probably have to upgrade some computers at some point. Long-term, I mean, you know, if we come back together and we find that there's still a lot of people that are using this and that it's a ministry that reaches out to people, I don't see why we wouldn't continue it. And we might look at expanding it. An obvious step is to livestream all the services every Sunday. And that would probably take, obviously, multiple cameras might take us upgrading our internet connection or adding some extra bandwidth. It's just something we'd have to look at as we move on down the road. So that's kind of the five or 10-minute item for me. And where we're at, as far as the live streaming goes. So thanks for your time today. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Brad. That was very informative. And David, I just put a little space for you if you want to say something.
Of course I do. I know some of you may not realize this, but this is actually my first time to pastor during a pandemic. I was still in seminary during the Spanish Flu of 1918. So none of us in this room have any experience in this. We're doing the best we can, but I want to assure you of two things. Number one, I truly believe in incarnational theology and ministry, that Jesus came, the word became flesh. And so, being with each other in the flesh is significant. And being with one another in bodily form is very important to our faith. So don't forget that. But secondly, I also want to assure you that we plan to be good neighbors in this community and want to do our part toward limiting community spread and being mindful of the vulnerability of people. I told you all in a video I sent out a long time ago that I got lucky once. Big floods hit the area in San Antonio in 1999. And Sunday morning, I didn't cancel church until 8:30 and nobody showed up. And that was a pretty good sign. We shouldn't do it. So finally, we did cancel the 9:30 and 11 o'clock services. But not everybody canceled their activities that morning. And not far from our church, people actually died trying to make it to an activity through the flood on that Sunday morning. And while I was grateful that my church service didn't cause that to happen, it really made me mindful of the responsibility that we take every time we decide to open our doors, especially in the midst of difficult situations. So no, just like the Homecoming team, we'll be careful about that while we continue to hope for that incarnational presence, that time that we can be together. And let me again add my thanks to the committee that's worked so hard to bring us this far. Thank you.
Thanks, David. And now I welcome Emily to be in charge and read us some questions and tell us who should answer. And here you go, Emily.
This question is for Brad. Brad, a question from Sarah. She says, will we continue live streaming on Facebook when we have three services or will we go to YouTube? And will we livestream other events as well?
I think the answer to that, and Chanson, you can feel free to chime in here as well. In my opinion, we would continue to livestream. I think that's, I always ask my kids, even when I'm feeling like there's nothing positive going on here, is what are some positive things we can take out of the coronavirus? And I think for the church, this has been a pretty big upgrade as far as our outreach and our service presence. So I don't know why we wouldn't continue to do it. To expand to other platforms requires a bit of an additional investment. I think we have to pay something for a service that can go to two places at once. Right now, we just picked Facebook because it's fairly easy and it's fairly straightforward to use. We could use Facebook and YouTube simultaneously. It's, I think the program is called Restream.io. And you can actually go to two, three, four different platforms if you want. I think that's something we would consider as we move forwards.
Yeah. Oh, sorry.
I was just saying that we do have a YouTube channel now. And the worship services are not livestreamed on YouTube, but they are posted afterwards. So if people don't have Facebook, they can still access us that way.
And I'm the one that's doing it, and I'm not always very quick to it. And so, if we had another volunteer willing to help make sure it goes like the Sunday that it happens, like, I don't know if I even put last week's up yet. So as you can see, it is an afterthought for me. And I would love another volunteer to help me make that quicker for those that like YouTube. But we just decided to excel at Facebook and keep it simple. But if there was a great demand for another thing, we would be open to that.
Comes from David. His question is, will we be considering compliance to Travis County guidance as far as the size of social gatherings? Considering that right now, we're in a stage four. A 14-day drop might get us to stage three or low-stage four, depending on the drop rate. So I don't know where we direct this question or if this is going to be a Homecoming team question that we kind of addressed in another meeting. But what is the Homecoming team's thoughts on that one?
Dave?
Was that for me or for David McBurney?
Let's say Dave Burrell.
Okay. Yeah, the, yeah, what we're, my answer would be, you know, what we're going to do is the Homecoming Committee. And again, if I'm speaking out of turn, someone will, I'm sure, correct me. But, you know, we're going to be looking at the situation as time goes on. So if it looks like it's not safe, we're not going to be safe. I mean, we're not going to reopen. The, I should also mention that we have had directive from the bishop for our conference early in the pandemic that, who said, advised and really, I guess, charged the congregations in the conference to, if we're going to err, to err on the side of opening too late as opposed to opening too early. And I, for one, am certainly taking that to heart as well. So I think we're going to be fairly conservative, or at least one member of the committee will be. And I think the committee, as well as we've gone through this process, is fairly conservative and fairly, certainly very concerned about the well-being of the congregation. Did that catch that one?
Another question that's come up is, will there be a pumpkin patch in the fall? It seems like there's a risk, but there are masks. And I'd like to add, it's also outdoors. And how about the Christmas tree lot? Same issue. These are major fundraisers for the church.
We will be doing the Christmas trees. At least, that's what we communicated to the Christmas tree. Someone recently said we're going to talk about pumpkins soon. And I'm not remembering who that is, but I don't know if we have a...
That would be me. We're having a discussion about it at a staff meeting tomorrow because the pumpkin people have to plant their pumpkins in a certain time. And they're pressing on us for responses. So Josh Teague will be visiting with the staff to get some input as we go forward. Of course, other churches are on the same timeline with pumpkin patch that we are. So to me, the answer to that question is, the pumpkin patch is probably still up in the air to be decided. And of course, the Fall Festival with it is a little different than just selling pumpkins. So anyway, we have a lot more time on that one, but the pumpkin is an issue that's coming shortly. And we will be in discussion about it.
If I could speak the tree Brooklyn, we have ordered trees. And then, we have until the end of July, so the next few weeks, to decide if we want to keep our order or cancel our order. So we had ordered trees back when things didn't, you know, we didn't have a big upshoot. So I imagine we'd probably have to have at least one more conversation to make sure that we're all on the same page in terms of, not just if we're selling trees, but how many and all that.
Clarifying question. Catherine says, when congregants are able to attend in person, should someone in that congregation be tested positive for COVID-19? That service would only stream for two weeks. If, because we're keeping the staff separate, and Homecoming team, correct me if I'm wrong, if we keep the staff separate, because the staff will be separate, we will not be streaming for that.
That's correct.
Became positive, we wouldn't stream the 8:30 service the following week. But we would be the next week, because we'll have had that whole week and then the whole next week. And that would cover the two weeks.
And the pastor could even send a message from home if we need to.
We did talk about creating an at-home message for that 8:30 service. This one is, let's see. Okay. And then, the next question was for Dave Burrell. How is this affecting, how is all of this affecting our finances as a church?
Yeah, that's a really good question. Before I answer it, I meant to say this earlier. That is, it's incredibly good to see everybody. I just love being able to see it. It's certainly not nearly as good as walking up and giving people hugs. But sure, it's great to see a sizable part of the congregation here. To answer the question, I'm also, of the other hand, I wear the church as I'm chair of the Finance Committee this year. So I think that's the reason I was directed to this one. The answer to the question is, thanks to everyone being faithful with giving through this long absence. The church finances are in reasonably good shape. This includes both the operating budget, which, you know, pays the ongoing expenses, but also, we also have a capital debt primarily from the family life center upgrades, but, you know, other things in the main facility. That node is, I think, down around $400,000 right now. Started at over 500. And so, that also is paid down as planned. We're the first year of that payoff. Having, I think, gosh, I think it was just last year that we did that capital campaign. So the other thing that was helpful in terms of finances is, you know, thanks to a lot of people in the church. Many of you, maybe you're familiar with the CARES Act. This is a federal legislation that provided funds to help keep staff employed through the coronavirus early days. There have been several stages of this. The very first one, we, the church actually applied for and received a grant from that program. So, which again, is to help every, help pay for staff through the end of through the end of June. So we just finished that. But that also, that funding was about $70,000. Sorry? Anyway, that funding was about $70,000. Keep in mind, the church budget is, you know, $700,000, $750,000, the operating budget annually. So it was, this was a significant significant assistance, injection to help the church with the finances. So we're not in horrible shape, but we're not out of the water yet either. So I'm, we're going to be following finances very closely. Again, if I just make one other point, you have to appreciate that, that obviously, there are expenses that we're saving by not being open. You know, we are conditioning and other things. But you have to appreciate that really, if you look at the church budget, again, I'm talking about the operating budget for the year. The lion's share of that is in staff and facilities. So, and you know, the staff and the facilities are, of course, ongoing. And we have ministries, even though there are some ministries that are not running full steam, there are others that are. We're trying to support those. And of course, we're, to the best of my knowledge, we're up to date on on apportionments as well for those who are concerned about our connectional issues. Thanks.
Come up is, are we taking any measures to ensure the best safety possible for our janitorial staff when we return?
We will be following the CDC guidelines in the sense of wearing gloves, wearing masks. If it's a positive COVID test, we'll be waiting 24 days before, not 24, 24 hours before even starting disinfecting. And then, we'll also be opening doors as possible to get fresh air in if something is a positive case. But yes, we're following CDC guidelines.
Do you have the questions that were sent ahead of time? Or does Kim have those? Did we address them already?
I have both.
You have them?
Yeah. So one of the questions was, when we have communion, and suggested maybe a drive-up thing. And funnily enough, we, the staff had already decided to do that. So on August 2, we are going to have a drive-in communion opportunity during our Sunday School Hour. We have two different times, 9:45 and 10:15. And we're hoping that as many people as possible will be able to come and take communion at that time. You'll be able to listen to the liturgy over your radio in your car. And we're also hoping people will sign up to be deliverers so that if there are people who cannot come, they can receive blessed elements in their home. So we're hoping for some volunteers to sign up to take communion that has been blessed to church members who aren't able to come for the drive-through. We'll be taking all the precautions there with masks and all that and gloves as we hand out the elements. And the elements will be in prepackaged, a prepackaged juice and wafer-type thing. So it'll be the safest possible. Another question that we received online is, have we thought about doing an evening outdoor service? That is something that we were talking about. Originally, we were thinking that by this time, we would already be in the building. So we hadn't spent, we didn't spend a long time talking about the idea of an outdoor. And also, because it's really hot in August, that's a consideration as well. But we're still talking about it. And if this looks like it's going to continue to go on for a long time, that's certainly something we're willing to consider. We brainstormed maybe having sunrise services or earlier morning services when it's not so hot. So we are talking about that. Let's see. David, you asked a question, and I'm not sure if it's already been answered, but I'm going to ask it anyway and then let Dave Burrell address anything that, if it hasn't been answered fully. It says, why are we using the hospital rate rather than raw number? Sorry? When the convention center is opened as a supplemental hospital, because hospitals are overrun, the rate will go down, but raw numbers and community spread will be up. Additionally, is there a ceiling we have to hit? For example, if hospitals go up 99%, then go down a percent a day for 14 days, we'd still be at 85% capacity. Still worse than today, but it meets our metric to re-enter. Does this metric come from an expert or something that we came up with on our own?
Hey, Kim, this is David. I asked that. I think he covered all that.
Okay.
Gosh, but I had such a good answer. Oh, there's the phone. Yeah, the, yeah, I mean, just to say a few words, I mean, the there are half a dozen metrics that are out there. If you go to the Austin, the Austin or Travis County or Hayes County, any of them, you can find these. You know, it's things like positivity ratio, number of active cases, number of total cases, hospitalizations, deaths. Hospital is the number of people in the hospital, the number of people admitted daily to the hospital, which is a slightly different number. The, we picked hospitalizations, I believe, my recollection is because it was information that was readily available and it's relatively understandable. It's the number of people sick in the hospital. And our assumption was that that would correlate pretty well with all these other metrics. Turns out that I've actually checked it against the number of active cases in the community for the last five weeks, with the exception of two days. The number of people in the hospitals correlated, it turns out to be about somewhere between 10 and 15% of the total number of active cases. So at least those two metrics correlate pretty well with each other. And I suspect that the others do. The only one that doesn't seem to correlate very well, at least... And I suspect that the others do. The only one that doesn't seem to correlate very well, at, at least nationally and perhaps even within our community is deaths to the, to the rest. Because you know, the, with this big spike and the surge, as I call it, from, from reopening that started again, sacredly the middle of June, the, you know, the big skyrocketing increase that you saw on the plot. The number of deaths has not really increased as dramatically, you know, that's a great thing, you know. I'm, I'm thrilled that deaths doesn't correlate so well to the, to the surge in the number of cases in the, in the area. But, but that's something that doesn't seem to correlate very well, at least as far as I can tell. The question of whether there's anybody professionally trained in these things on the committee, no, we're just all good-hearted people, you know, looking at the, at these metrics and trying to do them to make sense. Finally, I guess really because of that correlation, the, you know, the question, we, we actually addressed this question of, but what if, if we get a 14-day drop of 1% per day, you know, we're still at 85%. The, I, to some degree, I guess, I would consider that to be a bit hypothetical based on the correlations that I've talked about already. But certainly, you know, I, I would go back and reiterate that, you know, that the, the metric is slave to us. We're not slave to the metric. And if that's the case, you know, we'll take a hard look at what's going on and we're going to do that anyway. When we get close to reopening and make sure that, that all of the indicators point towards a safe reopening. And otherwise, again, I can't speak for the committee, but I for one would not support reopening if, if there are questions on, on any of the fronts on, on regarding the, the safety of coming back together.
David also asked a question about other protections that we are putting in place focused on community spread or for protecting vulnerable members of our church. And then if we're asking vulnerable members to stay home, that that kind of acknowledges that there still is a risk of spread. If we spread it to healthy members, we have contributed to community spread to those vulnerable outside the church. And I will just say that every time we meet, we talk about the risks involved. And that we know that when we do start meeting again and the absence of some sort of vaccine that everyone's required to take, there will be some sort of risk involved to our members and to our community. So we are trying to balance that, but we definitely have the community in mind. And, and I mean, definitely our church members, but also our larger community in mind.
And if, if the risk of commandeering the town hall, let me just mention that, you know, risk is, you know, there are people that, that make, make a living assessing risk. I'm not one of them, but I can tell you that, for example, at our church, at least since I've been a member, there was, there was a church member that was killed in a car wreck driving to church. And so if we want to minimize the risk of people getting, getting hurt or killed in car wrecks, then we all stop driving and we cancel church. And there's going to be a risk that we have to assess that the, the issue really is how do we manage that? And with COVID, at least everything I see, even, even looking to, you know, to a vaccine, it still looks like there's going to be a risk of COVID, even if, even if we come out with a vaccine. So this is going to be something we're just going to have to deal with and we're going to have to do it as faithfully and seriously as we can.
And the last question was, is there any consideration to HVAC upgrades? I don't think that we've talked about that as a team. We have talked about leaving doors open for circulation of air, but not in terms of upgrading our systems.
From Alan and Rhonda. Mark, this question is for you. Can you address for the congregation, what type of choir participation might be used in early in-person worship?
That's something that we've talked about in the homecoming and the exile meetings that we've done and we're still kind of looking at that. Seeing what our options are. There's still a lot of discussion about whether or not the extent of how much singing is, is a detriment or to spreading the virus. So we are just trying to look at options that we can still be safe. As far as the congregation singing in the, during worship, that'll probably be lessened greatly because of trying not to spread the virus as far as choir participation. It'd be, it'll probably be, one of the things that we're considering is doing more things like we did this morning. We're having small ensembles equally spaced apart in a safe, safe environment that we can do that.
Are there any other questions that anyone would like to speak out or put in the chat box for any of the members or for Pastor David for this homecoming town hall meeting?
Well, I had hoped we wouldn't go more than an hour and it looks like we're just about at an hour. So if you have something to add or some last question, then feel free to do it right now or you can always email any of the leaders and we can get in touch with you later if a question comes up to you later that you realized you wish you would have asked.
I just wanted to say, I so appreciate all of y'all's work. Thank you, task force and staff and all of you who have been working so hard on all these details. Really appreciate it.
Thanks for that, Ellen. I'm going to let David close us out. Oh, wait, we have a couple, one more question. When on the timeframe, do you envision Sunday school going live again? Kim, you want to answer that?
Okay, um, yes. When we first started talking about opening up, we thought we would re-enter into worship in the summer. And then when children go back to school in the fall, that's when we would open up nursery and childcare and, and then have Sunday school classes as well. We did not want to open up Sunday school classes until we were able to accommodate anyone, including people with kids. Since then, numbers have skyrocketed and we don't know what schools are doing in the fall. And there's still lots of room considerations in terms of, a lot of, there are some rooms that are big enough that people could space out in, but there's a lot of rooms that are, people are packed in like sardines. So those are all considerations that we'll have to take. When we do re-enter the building, we are definitely going to be focused on worship first so that we don't overrun our custodians with having to sanitize. And we want to make sure that we're offering good quality worship services first. And then we will look at when and how we can bring Sunday schools back into the building. It will likely be a combination still of online and in-person for some time. Sorry, that's not a definite when, but that's where we are right now.
Thank you, Kim. All right, David.
Thank you. Um, there's a phrase going around, probably it's not just in the church world, but the phrase is that we're a distributed church and a distributed leadership. That simply means that what COVID has done is called on so many other people to use their talents and energies like our homecoming task force and, and AV volunteers. And, and that's really, that's, there is a silver lining and in this, it's cloud is that people have stepped up and been to church in, in new ways. And so I just wanted, my last word would be thank you. It's a privilege to be and work and minister with all of you. I'm, I'm very grateful. So let me pray, gracious and loving God, bless us and guide us, protect us, protect those we love, protect our community, protect our world. Lord, give us wisdom and perseverance and strength and all that's required to make the sacrifices necessary. Lord, for this world to get to a place where people can live the life that you have for them. We ask this in confidence and in hope in your son, Jesus Christ. Amen. Thank you all.